If everyone would stand, we'll do the pledge allegiance and followed by an invocation.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for this beautiful day you've given us today. Please watch over us tonight as we make decisions for the county and help us to make the best decision that we can. Please be with everyone here tonight and keep them all safe. They're going to go home tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and let the roll call show that all commissioners are present and entertain any additions or deletions to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one addition to the agenda and that would be an appointment for Walton County Board of Adjustment. It'll be item 11-4 and that'll be due to a movement of a planning commission member.
And this will be appointment to the Board of Appeals?
It'll, yes, Board of Appeals.
Okay, are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? We were going to move the rezoned 85 acres to the front, but we're having to wait on a sign interpreter to do sign language at a request, so we'll keep bumping it down the agenda until we have the sign language here. All right, I need a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous and we'll jump right into Planning Commission recommendations.
Okay, case 4.1 is approval of CU 2304-0038. This is a conditional use for outside storage. The applicant is Fast Cutting LLC Alexandra Karakas and the owner is Todd and Teresa Hicks. Property is located at 2955 Highway 81. This is in District 2. At the Planning Commission Alexandra Karakas represented the case. She's seeking a conditional use for outside storage of trucks, chippers, and equipment for her business All Seasons Tree. They do commercial and residential tree removal. There was no opposition and the Planning Commission recommended approval.
Okay, thank you. I will open a public hearing on this application and is the applicant here would like to come up and please tell us what you're doing?
Hi, how are y'all tonight? My name is Alexandra Karakas. I own For All Seasons Tree Service. My business partner's Todd King. We have been in business for 20 years. We currently reside in Gwinnett County. We do residential and commercial. He is a certified arborist. We have a contingency on this property at 2955 81 South for the zoning, for the outside storage. It's already Zone B2 and we are not going to put a stored, I mean, we're not going to put a building on it right away, so that's why we were going for the conditional use to bite us a little bit of time before we got the property ready because we have to do the detention pond, the buffers, the fence, and lots of stuff that DOT requested as well. We do tree removal, tree trimming. We sell firewood and we have Bobcat chippers and trucks. There would be no major traffic. The employees get there about 7:30 in the morning and they leave by 7:45. They usually don't come back between 3:00 and 5:00. We usually typically only work Monday through Friday and we talked to the DOT and the only thing they requested was to have a right lane in and a right lane out so we wouldn't be making a left onto 81. And they did ask if I would get in touch with the gas station next to us to see if we could use their entrance. He denied it, which would probably be a better thing because it was kind of dangerous with the trucks coming in and them getting gas and stuff. We have done a lot for the, we donate a lot to the schools, Trinity, Loganville Christian Academy, Loganville Elementary Middle School, and we look forward to being in Walton County to grow our business. This is a big step for us. We've been here for 20 years and we're excited about being able to grow our business.
Okay, thank you.
Can answer any questions?
Are there any questions from the board? If not, thank you ma'am.
There was one more thing I was going to add. The back part of the rectangular, we're not actually even going to use that. We were going to cut the back of it off and just use that as a buffer because it's a watershed area and so we wouldn't even be disturbing any of the people behind it. It's really just going to be on the front part.
Okay.
So it would just be that front square is what we would actually be developing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here in support of this application would like to make a statement? Seeing none, is there anyone here in opposition to this application would like to come up and make a statement? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing and ask the board their wishes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the conditional use.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Thank you all.
Okay, the next item 4.2, Planning Commission recommendation for denial of Z 2304-0021 was to rezone 8.74 acres from A1 to B3 for truck, a truck parking facility and a variance to reduce the minimum building setback to five foot on the eastern side of the property. The applicant is Grual Ventures LLC and the owner is Pinnacle Sports Academy. This is located at 120 Highway 78 in District 4. And at the Planning Commission, John Brewer with WNA Engineering represented the case for the applicant. He wants to rezone the 8.73 acres, as I said, to B3 to have a truck parking for approximately 150 vehicles off of Highway 78 and the variance as I described. This is to the east of the prop, to the east of the property is a CND landfill and there's, whoops.
You're going to have to get rid of the advertising.
I know, sorry. And there's one adjoining property owner that has said they have no problem with truck parking. On the west side is agriculture. It's 875 feet from the property line and 1,000 feet from where the trucks will be parked. There will be a 275-foot natural hardwood buffer on the residential side. There was one person in opposition that was representing the residents of Bradley Gin subdivision. Their main concern was the increase in traffic that this would cause. The Planning Commission recommended denial 4 to 2.
Board of 2.
Board of 2.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant here? I'm going to open a public hearing and John, come forward and tell us what your client wants to do.
Well, the, it's simply this is a truck parking facility. It's located directly, directly across the street from the two CND landfills and within 600 to 800 feet from the property that was rezoned last week, our last meeting for a, for a trash separation facility. The property to the east is about a 200 something acre tract. It's already a CND landfill and that's what I asked for the variance on, on the side yard setback, setback adjoining that landfill. The gentleman that, that opposed for the homeowners association from subdivision down the road, you would literally have to go back towards Monroe a mile and you would have to take a ride across 78 to get back across the West Hand Lane and then go another half a mile to the entrance to their subdivision. One of the reasons that I was given for, for the denial was the fact that that was the gateway to Walton County. Well, I don't know if he was just confused, but that's the gateway to Oconee County. The gateway to Walton County, we all know what that looks like and that is directly across Highway 78 from this property. And honestly, I thought that this would be a perfect place for a truck parking facility. Its frontage would be on 78. It would have to go through all the DOT approval for its diesel lane. We know it'll have to have one and the only thing you'd really see from the road is a 10-foot tall chain link fence for about 250 feet along 78.
All right, any other questions from the board? I have one question. The property to the right is wooded. Is the cleared area down in the right-hand corner, the CND landfill?
Yes, sir. They own about, it's Old Republic. They own about 300 acres out there.
Okay.
And that's the only.
That's the one that's not active right now that's waiting for the other two to fill up?
Yes, sir. And it's literally less than a quarter of a mile from the county line there.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, thank you, John. Is there anyone else here in favor of this application would like to speak in favor of it? Is there anyone here in opposition? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name's Russell Bennett. I live at 134 Highway 78, which is the farm next door with the pond there.
With the lake?
Yes, sir, with the lake. The house is early 1800s. It's been in my family since 1989 and we bought it from the Backus family. They hadn't had it since the 40s. I raise grass-fed beef out there. I have a family, have two young children. You know, to have 150 trucks, and I'm not sure what trucks means. It's that tractor-trailers that are going to be parking there overnight. I worry about what that brings. That's about 250 yards from my porch and my kids are playing out there all the time fishing in that pond. I worry about the traffic. That site sits about, it's a good bit lower, I'm not exactly how low, but a good bit lower than the highway. So these trucks, if it's tractor-trailers, will be pulling up a hill and then if they're going to the west, they would have to take a right and do a U-turn where there's already a bunch of trucks doing U-turns from the big landfill there that you can just barely see a sliver of. And then there's quite a bit of traffic coming in and out of the roll-off systems landfill there across the street. So any trucks coming west would have to do a U-turn in front of my house there and be fighting with the roll-off system trucks to, you know, to do that turnaround. So, you know, the traffic is a big worry for me. There's also, you know, I pull out of my driveway every day. There's cars coming around that curve going 80, 85 miles an hour. So big trucks coming up a hill out of this site, turning onto the highway, to me, just seems like a dangerous situation, especially if they encounter another truck doing a U-turn trying to go back to the east from the other landfill. And that, that other landfill is mainly, the one next to roll-off systems is mainly 18-wheeler loads. So they have a big piece of equipment that picks up those trailers and dumps the trash. So it's all big trucks. And so all those trucks, you know, pulling in and out and it just seems like a bad situation to me, dangerous really, especially with the speed that folks are traveling on 78. I worry about the lights at night. I worry about the noise. You know, typically in truck parking facilities, these guys are, you know, sleeping in their trucks. So their trucks are idling, which emits diesel fuel, noise, reverse beeps, and, you know, just all the things that a truck, a tractor-trailer parking facility brings with it. You know, I'm raising a family out here, you know, I've become friends with the folks that own the landfill. I've, you know, worked with them on quite a few issues. We talk whenever I have an issue and, you know, we, we work it out and, but just face-to-face meeting. I've never complained to the county. I've always just talked to them and they've been very amenable to my concerns. So those are my main concerns, dust. I know that the city requires a truck parking area to, to be concrete. Asphalt, these big trucks just tear up asphalt. So if it's a gravel lot, I worry about the dust coming in and out, ending up in my pond, ending up on my house when the wind blows that direction. So those are my main concerns. I agree with the Planning Commission to, you know, to vote on a denial of this rezone. I just don't think it's a good site for, for this application and the traffic concerns.
Okay. Any questions from the board? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here in opposition to this? Please come forward.
My name is Rick Hazaak. We have a small trucking operation in Monroe and I kind of mirror some of the concerns that he has, that they, having a truck go up an incline like that onto, right onto a highway is extremely dangerous and we have seen a lot of accidents being in the trucking community. 78 already has a tremendous amount of truck traffic on it and I kind of mirror the concerns. I wasn't clear when I was reading the variance in the rezone request, if it was going to be gravel or it was going to be concrete. But another thing that can happen is the gravel can get caught in the thread of the truck and when you go up and then off onto a high-speed highway, it can throw gravel. So my issues are more of a safety concern.
All right. Sharona, what would be required if it, would it be asphalt, cement?
They would have to have an asphalt drive, a commercial drive, that the actual parking area could be gravel.
Under our code, yeah, okay. Anyone else in opposition that would like to speak? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm sorry? Oh, that's correct. I give John a chance to come back. Thank you, counsel.
The facility that we're proposing would have a key fob to get in and out. There wouldn't be anyone spending the night in the vehicles on the property. It was just simply for them to park their vehicles off of their private property to comply with the county code. But there would be no spending the night or no, there's no, going to be no physical building there. It's just going to be a key fob. You get a spot number and you pay your rent every month and your key fob works. And it's just a place to park a semi-truck or a boat or a, really anything that you would like to, that's a vehicular storage yard.
All right, any other questions from the board? All right, now I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Bradford.
Our second motion.
And we have a second from Kirkland Dixon. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. All right, motion passes 5-1 on the denial. As our sign personnel showed up, then we're going to skip to 5-2.
Okay, 5-2 is AZ, which is alteration to zoning 2306-0003. The request is to remove a buffer condition on the side, on the right side of the driveway. The applicant and owner of this property is Walton County Veterans Association, Inc. Property is located at 1700 Snowsmill Road. This is in District 6. And on this case, this was approved for the Veterans Association with conditions of outside lighting to be faced downward and then the 200-foot buffer to remain on the right side of the driveway. After they have had their engineers to look at this property and the lay of the property, they are not able to maintain that 200-foot buffer. So they would just like to get that alteration to have that removed.
Okay. I'll open a public hearing on this. Representative from the applicant here.
Mr. Chairman, all of you know about the property we got from the industrial park. After we had a site plan done and architects and the engineers, they told us that, that buffer is pushing us down to the creek where it's actually only six acres of that property is buildable on. And that buffer, and Harold, good old Korean veteran here, can explain that buffer, how it's pushing us down into the creek. I'm sorry, Vietnam, I didn't mean to make you older than what you are.
I'm old enough.
So to be, to be able to utilize this track for your facility, the buffer needs to be removed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the, and the buffer joins that pasture, that cow pasture to the right.
Okay.
Unfortunately, when the, when the zoning board had met and everything, I was in the hospital getting.
Pacemaker.
And I wasn't here and I guess they didn't realize what the East Balance Board.
We were so excited to get it, we didn't know about all these restrictions y'all put on us.
The 200-foot buffer and the property is about 1,150 feet long. A 200-foot buffer takes away 5.2 acres of the, the acres that's there. It's actually, you can see the dark part there at the pine. There is a, when, when Aether Food owned this piece of property, they harvest the timber and they have to do it under a permit, not a timber permit.
A wetlands permit.
Which require them to put silt fences, also the silt fence runs right along with that green spot timber is there. And in one spot, two spots back there, it's not up to their big lot.
Okay. All right, any questions from the board? All right, thank you, gentlemen. Is there anyone else here wants to speak in favor of this request? Not, is there anyone here in opposition to this request? Please come forward.
All right. Hi, I'm Ryan Turgeon. I live at the property across the street. There were a good bit of people in opposition to this being built in the first place. We had concerns in the neighborhood of where it was going to be able to be built, knowing where the creek runs. When we were told there'd be the buffer, it gave us at least a little bit of peace of mind, knowing it wouldn't turn our residential area into what's going to look like a business, you know? It's going to have a parking lot, you know, the driveway, attracting traffic. So I don't know if you're planning to remove the buffer entirely or, you know, still give us at least some of the trees to help reduce the noise that's going to come from the facility. But yeah, the buffer removes a lot of the peace of mind from people in the neighborhood adjoining where it's going to be built.
Okay, any questions of the board? Thank you, sir. Is anyone else would like to speak in opposition to this? I want to ask one quick question, Sharona. The buffer we're talking about joins the pasture, not the front of the property, right?
That's right.
Across from the neighborhood.
Just on that line right there. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sharona, would that be any buffer at all? I mean, would there be a buffer?
They're required to have a 50-foot.
50-foot, so it would be 50-foot.
Adjacent to, yeah.
There will still be a 50-foot there, okay.
And that's per the ordinance, right?
All right. Do y'all want to make any more statements in favor, Joe?
I'd just like to say that this is an industrial park. That's what it was built for. That could be a concrete plant going in there.
That is correct.
And there'd be a lot of noise and dust then, but we're just a bunch of old men getting together, try to talk about how this country used to be. We fought for it. That's all we wanted to do.
All right, thank you.
Matter of the community.
Thank you, sir. Good point. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm making a motion. We approve this with the required 50-foot buffer per our ordinance.
We have a motion to approve with the required 50-foot buffer. We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In opposition, passes unanimous. All right, the 5.3.
Okay, 5.3 is an amendment to the Walton County Land Development Ordinance. This was tabled from last month. If you remember, we were having a discussion last month about the A zoning category. A is a zoning category that was added in 2003 and it's basically commercial agricultural uses. Currently, you have to have five acres. So if somebody wanted to do, you know, any kind of organic farm or anything like that, they would have to have a five-acre tract. Is it, Kristy, is that up here? No. Oh, that's a variance. Hello. Anyway, so we're looking at that to see if the board wants to change it from a five-acre requirement to a two-acre requirement. There's ups and downs to that as always. You know, having a five-acre tract for commercial agricultural uses allows the greater buffer, but we've had a lot of people that have wanted to do different agricultural uses that don't have five acres. So we told them that we would present it to the board. If the board decided to change it, we would also recommend the minimum house size, which is 1,000 square foot, to be 1,400, to be the same as the other A1 and A2 zonings. So that's just, you know, totally up to you guys if you want to, you know, leave it at the five acres.
I know we don't have to, but I would like to hold a public hearing on that and get input from the public to, you know, because there are people won't. Okay, we would.
You would, yeah, it would be.
Okay.
And open for discussion. So we can move forward with that. We can advertise it. I mean, this is a public hearing.
I don't, I don't, yes, it is.
If anybody wanted to voice their concern.
But I didn't know the details of what you were talking about to just then.
Well, I threw you off there for a minute when I mentioned the mound, so sorry about that. It's been a long day.
Yes, we can move forward with that because I see the applications on the small, people won't have an acre and a half garden, you know?
Right.
And sell their produce.
Or bees, you know, they want to have bees and they have four acres. They can't, you know.
All right, do we need a motion to move forward on this?
We would. This is just, would be a motion to approve it. If you.
I need to see if anyone wants to speak in opposition to us moving forward right now. So I'll open a public hearing. If anyone here would like to speak in opposition to us looking into changing the A1 district from five acres for commercial agricultural to two.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, this has already been advertised exactly what they're talking about doing?
Oh, it has.
So if you move, so if you, if you act on it, you're acting on it.
Oh, okay. Well, there's been so much other commotion on other things. I've missed that advertisement, so. so, all right. There's no one here speaking in opposition to it, so we will proceed in accepting a motion from the board.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, a motion to approve from Jeremy Adams.
Second.
Second from Tim Shellnuts. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we go back to 5-1. Thank you. And Sharona, would you please?
Okay. This was a rezone of 85.48 acres from A1 to R1 with conditions for a residential cemetery. Subdivision. Y'all, I'm so sorry. A residential subdivision.
It's not allowed.
Oh, my gosh. The applicant is Lexus Homes. The owner is Snowsmill Road LLC. This is in District 4. And I just wanted to explain what this case is tonight for everybody. So before you tonight is a rezone of the 85 acres located on Snowsmill Road to R1 with conditions. As you recall, the owner previously sought a rezone to R1 OSC for 79 lots. The board denied that rezone request in February of 2021, and the owner filed a lawsuit which is still pending. No court decisions have been made. However, the owner has made an alternative rezone proposal, which if accepted would result in dismissal of the lawsuit. Staff is of the opinion that the proposed resolution is a benefit to the county considering that residential development is allowed under the current zoning, which would allow for approximately 40 lots of two acres each. Under the proposal that's being submitted tonight, there will be a maximum of 64 lots, with each one being a minimum one acre. Additionally, the proposed conditions, which are included in your meeting material, require much larger homes, 1,400, as opposed to, well, 1,600, and up to 2,200 on a single family, 2,400 on a two-story. Currently, in the A1, there's 1,400 square foot houses are allowed. With this zoning action tonight, it was properly advertised in the paper. However, inadvertently, the sign was not posted on the property, nor were the letters mailed by our department. I've talked to the county attorney about this. He said that we should proceed with this public hearing tonight. However, we won't make a decision because it has not been properly posted and advertised with the letters. And just to let you know, we've got the ad to the newspaper already, the letters are in the mail, and the property will be posted tomorrow for this to actually be heard and a decision made at the August meeting. So no decision can be made tonight, but we can hear, have public hearing and let everyone speak.
Okay. All right. I will open our public hearing even though no decision will be made tonight since everybody's made the effort to get out and be here. And we'll start off with the applicant, please.
Question, Mr. Chairman. So next month, would there be another hearing in addition to this?
There will be.
So two hearings? So everybody get a chance to speak?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Commissioners. Matt Reeves, One Sugarloaf Center, Duluth, Georgia, 300097. I'm at Anderson Tate and Carl Law Firm. I represent Mr. Ken Gary, his daughter Tamara, who's here tonight. They are Lexus Homes and Snowsmill Road LLC. I'm co-counsel to Paul Rosenthal, who I believe presented this two and a half years ago and worked on the case and got involved about a year ago or so in the case. I'm not going to talk about the case today. What I am going to talk about is high-quality custom homes and changes in this application that make this mutually beneficial for the county and for property values in this area. Mr. Gary worked a career at Georgia Power and retired in 1997, has been building custom homes throughout northeast Georgia between here and Chateau Line for the last 25 years or so. Hedge Rose Subdivision is one that reminds him a lot of what he's proposing to build in this, on these 85 acres now. We've presented renderings to the county of both those nice custom homes as well as the entrance to the neighborhood, that landscaped island. This neighborhood has 85 acres. It will have 64 lots. That is fewer lots than was proposed two and a half years ago. And also, the homes will be bigger, and they'll have standards that are higher than the Walton County minimum standards. The minimum square footage will be 2,200 for one-story homes and 2,400 for two-story homes. The subdivision has been named, and that's because Mr. Gary's already drafted up the covenants and the bylaws for the Homeowners Association, which will be mandatory. The name of the subdivision is proposed to be Montclair Subdivision. And some of the high standards he has, again, a mandatory homeowners association. We've got a total of 17 conditions that we've filed with the county for this proposed amendment. We have minimum lot sizes of one acre with setbacks in that, brick up to the water table on the front, the sides of the home. Front porches will have masonry face and pavers. There will be no vinyl siding or aluminum siding. That will be prohibited. Front or side chimneys will be masonry. Most of the garage doors will be side-facing. The yards will be sotted, the shingles will be architectural shingles. The homeowners association, which is mandatory and which will have covenants, will have an architectural review committee. Again, we presented home renderings for this custom home neighborhood to the county. We presented a picture of the attractive entrance to the subdivision, which will be 100-foot wide right of way and will have a 30-inch raised median, so it'll be permanent and won't, you know, wear away. It's an attractive entrance, it's an attractive neighborhood, it's high-quality custom standards. We respectfully request approval of it. I'm here to answer any questions you have, and we respectfully request approval of this neighborhood, and I reserve time for rebuttal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions at this time from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Okay, we will start with those in opposition. If you would, please try not to repeat the same objection that someone else has done. We try to, we get it when you make your statement, but try to keep it to not repetitive same complaints. So who's first? Please come forward.
I live on 3059 Snowsmill Road, and I wasn't expecting to be here like this because I didn't know that this was all happening. And so, so it doesn't get slid by, and I appreciate you moving it to the next month.
Could you pull your microphone down a little bit? Thank you.
Does that work better?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm not used to, I'm speaking on the phone here. Okay. We have 600 persons that have already signed a petition, and there are more forthcoming now that we have noticed, which represents a big chunk. And I do believe that all of you that sit on the board are paid their, your piddly thing or volunteer to be a public servant for the public that live here. So our expectation is that you represent us and not the developers. So that's that. The plans themselves, we, it sits on a water recharge area and by, it's an A, was it A1 or A2, Sharona?
It's A1.
A1, okay. The requirements for water recharge area under the current standing as A1 would be 2.2, because it has to be 110%, because I believe Sharona told us last time that it was a lower level of danger, correct?
What did you say it would be?
2.2 acres.
For recharge?
Yes, because it's 110%, because you said it's lower. There's three grades. You told me there was three grades.
What, what, excuse me, what's the recharge area?
The water recharge area is a specific, there's several in, throughout the state of Georgia.
There's one at City of Monroe's reservoir that's protected, and Hard Labor Creek has area protected. What area is this one in?
This is a huge area. It covers that whole square from Jack's Creek to Snowsmill on both sides of the road. It's a good mile circle around the whole thing. It goes directly into the water aquifer, and we have farms there.
Excuse me, we don't have aquifers in North Georgia.
Well, not water.
North Georgia sits on granite.
Water source, the water table, excuse me, water table?
Okay.
Thank you for correcting me. Okay, but the thing is, is that right now, there is a person that has one home on over 150 acres, and his home sits on a water recharge area, and he already has septic problems. That, that's an actual fact. The other piece is, is that in that, if the livestock or our wells get contaminated from having 64 homes put sewers and septic tanks there, who's going to be responsible for the sick or deaths of anybody that occurs? Is that going to be you? Is that going to be the owner? If you approve it. The other piece is, one of the things is, is that there is the lawsuit, I think, is why it's come forward again. And I don't know what the legal ease on everybody is, but typically, if you look at the lawsuit, it supports case studies, or case law that you've had before that proves that this is a valid reason. Well, this case has no valid reasons, there's no case study. And it's all about, he paid $249,000 for 83 acres. And I'm sorry, he can build 22 to 25 homes and make a tremendous profit and follow the zoning that's already there. You know, when my dad said to me, he says, pigs get fat and hogs get slaughtered, and that's how it should be. That's not right. It is not right to put people out of livelihood. There are people that have organic farms. Do you know what it would be like if they sprayed contaminated water on their vegetables? They'd be out of business in a heartbeat.
Let's stick to facts, please. There's a lot of innuendos in your statements of things that I'm not aware of. I understand 42 versus 64 is half again as many homes.
22, I said.
That's correct.
22 to 24, but you, do you not agree if you pay $2,000 an acre for...
But we're not getting into what he paid or any profit. That has nothing to do with...
In other words, it's not an economic hardship on him to comply with the...
I understand that.
And that's, that's the thing. And one of the things I need to say to all the people that have come is make sure that you test your water before the end of this month, so it goes on record that you have healthy, viable, drinkable water. And that's all I have to say about that, because I think you all should vote. It shouldn't have even come up again. It shouldn't. You voted down before, and that's how it should stay.
What this is, is a proposal due to litigation. And that's all it is right now. And this board will have the right to make a decision to go with a proposal or not go with a proposal.
Right.
And that's why we want to listen to everyone.
We just want you to represent us. That's all. That's why we put you in office, to represent us.
We do. Okay, who's next? I know there's got to be somebody else. Thank you.
I think this all comes down to economic...
State your name, please, and where you live.
Tommy Nash. I live on 518 Bearden Road, Monroe, Georgia. I think this all comes down to economics and money. And I love for people to make money. I love for people to be successful. But there's consequences when you get out of bounds. This piece of property, if you go look at, and I go by there quite often, it's flood plain. So there's a lot of money got to be spent to fix that. Well, this piece of property she's talking about, the county didn't even know that that was a recharge area. It was discovered in the last meeting. So that, that has to be considered for homes everywhere, the possibility of making people sick. Now, I don't have a problem. He's got water in there, that's not a problem. He wants to put 84 homes in there with sewer and take care of that and get it away from me, I don't have a problem. Make a living, go at it. But this, this property is not fit for the number of homes to try and put in there. It's okay to put whatever's required for now, but, but I want to address an issue that seems to scare people to death, and that is lawsuits. They happen every day. And people make money with lawsuits. Well, if you go into the, the one sore story that Walton's always referred to, it's Gwinnett County, this don't be another Gwinnett County. Gwinnett County, and you can verify this with a superior court judge, has had one case, one case on rezones to go to an appeal court, and they lost it. You can't, you can't lose on that issue. So don't be fearful of defending a lawsuit for the people. That's all I got to say about that. Stand up.
We have a good attorney.
Good. You don't have a good negotiator, though.
Well, we haven't totally negotiated it yet. Thank you. Sharona, just a moment, I'll let the next one speak. This recharge area, is there any documentation or data that could be gathered before this next meeting so I can get educated on it, please?
Yes, sir. We've, we've got a groundwater recharge guidelines in our ordinance. We have maps in our office that show the groundwater recharge areas, so we do know where they are.
Okay.
What Ms. Candace was saying, part of the guidelines say, "A new home serviced by a septic drain, a septic tank drain field system must be approved by the Walton County Health Department and must have a lot that is at least 110% of the minimum lot size required by Table MT-1." And MT-1 is for a public, single-family dwelling, the minimum lot size is 21,780 square foot.
That's half acre.
That's half an acre. So our guidelines, you know, and then for non-public, is 43,560. Well, that's what they are asking for, is the 43,560.
It's the one acre, okay. I'm, I'm sorry, who was next?
I can get you a copy of this.
Who was next, please? I apologize.
My name's Mark Kane, and I reside over in Good Hope, over off 186, about a mile outside of the city of Good Hope. The first thing that comes with the zoning, and you guys will have another one before you, on Pleasant Valley coming up, will be the same one that will be voted on, is this one. The thing the county commissioners need to realize is, what about our water system that the lady talked about earlier? Says 75%, and this comes from the comprehensive plan that governs the body that was put together. 75% of the county water is already used in 2021, with the county having to invest $120 million into Hard Labor Creek, again, as shared with the Coney County, but to fix the infrastructure from the 60s and 70s, the county's looking at another $30 million to fix our current water system.
We, we're doing it right now.
Right, yes, sir. But here, but here's where some of the issue is. I talked to Tyler Pennell over at the Waterstorm thing today, and Big Flat Creek and Little Hayes Creek is E. coli affected. In other words, the water in that, in that creek has already been deemed on your comprehensive plan with no action plan to fix that. And a lot of those homes are serviced, they got county water, but they got septic tank. So what's the county doing to fix those issues? The Jack's Creek reservoir that runs down the creek, I don't know if any of you guys have been down 186, thank God, the guy from IMAC has, has bought that property, but he has stripped all the, all the trees off of it, which is fine. He, he can do what he wants. And I'm excited that people are wanting to invest in Walton County, but we've got to be sensible about this. So all the, all the water runoff to Jack's Creek is going to affect the Appalachia River, which, which affects our water, our watershed. Like she talked about earlier about our well, what are you guys doing to protect it? And so when you put this high-density zoning in, you're putting that water, you know, 70 homes at 1,000 gallons, that's, that's per acre per day on the percolation. And from the EPDM, which is the Northeast Health Association that put a published out, they talked about the... they talked about the percolation in our area. And it's, it's bare minimum at an acre. So, so what I think should be done is a minimum of two acres. And so the, so the Jack Creek is not listed or is being tested currently under the 305 Plan, which, when the state comes out and tests the water, they'll put it on a plan that, that requires either, you know, if we got dead fish or what's going on, they test the water. That, Jack's Creek has none of that. We got a 30-inch or 36-inch sewage main that runs up 83 to Jack's Creek waste plate. What happens if that main breaks today? It's on the side of the road. You can see it when you're driving out towards Good Hope. If that sewage line breaks, what's the county going to do to fix that?
That's the city of Monroe's main.
Okay, so, so what's the response action to fix the watershed there?
The EPD is in full charge of that plant. They have some sort of response plan, but I could not elaborate on it.
Right. But, but again, we're putting that septic sewage into our system.
And they have to test Jack's Creek. I know for a fact it's being tested. So is Appalachia, by two different sources. You have the Appalachia River Keepers and the EPD.
Right. But we don't know what those results are and if the rivers or river or creeks are full of sediment or need treatment. So if I don't have well water on my property, I'm, you know, what do I do? Spend thousands of dollars of treatment? How do you prove it? You'll never be able to prove it in a court system because you don't know where it came from. But you guys are responsible for protecting our watershed. And I've got some solutions for you, would be to create a task force to address the issues in the county and fix, fix the solution over at Big Flat Creek as well as Little Hays Creek. You've got to have a solution. It seems the county is reacting after the fact instead of being proactive. Require, instead of a level three test, require a level four. When these guys come before the zoning and ask for the zoning, none of them have done a level three test. They've only done a preliminary on it, but they've not done a level three, they've not even done a level three per lot, which would be requiring drilling six holes per, per property to make sure it percolates. So, so it's going to be a scramble. I would suggest that the county require a level four test, which is more towards in line with high-density zoning, so you get a better outlook of what the septic tank effect is on our groundwater. The other thing is, I'd encourage the commissioner to become a water-first community. That, the city of Monroe received $150,000 this year with an 18.7 million grant that was for the whole state. I'd encourage the commissioners to consider about putting a task force together and get some of that money that could be used to be tested our water and make our water better. And then, and then again, I would ask that they extend the zoning process. You guys, they post a sign, they got 30, you know, it goes to a planning, it comes to this. A lot of states and a lot of counties and down in Florida, it'd take you two years to get through the process. I'm not saying two years, but there needs to be more input from the community when we go to this high-density zoning that affects everybody. So you've got time to, to do some research and get that. And that's all I have for you. I appreciate your time, guys. And I'd like to recognize the guy here that served in the Vietnam War. I appreciate your service, sir.
Okay, who is next? And while he's walking down, I have inquired about the water first. I was shocked that we are not a water-first community and we're working toward that, so...
My name is Bruce Verge. Good evening, Chair Commissioners. The good news is that this was posted. I'm not, I'm not for it, of course, but I'm also, we have to understand, there's some things you just can't stop. The good thing is that we have some time. We'll talk to Commissioner Bradford to see if we can get together and somehow find a reasonable solution to this. You know, everyone has these complaints or concerns, but I know everything that I've built in this county. I've always had a problem with the EPA with my septic, and I wasn't allowed to get away with anything. So there are people in place to help with our concerns. The county does need growth, and I think the best that we can do together with your help is try to come together and figure a solution. I know we were close last time. I was very surprised, to be honest with you, of the outcome last time, but here we are back again. The lawsuit doesn't really scare me nor anybody. It's, quite frankly, the county's money, but I think we can get together, talk to Commissioner Bradford, try to get together and see what we can reasonably ask to design this county what we want it to look like out there. I have a lot of property out there, and by the way, I'm part of the IBAC. The good news is there's no subdivisions out there. Now, you lost your trees, but you'll have cows and stuff like that, but there's always somebody in opposition of something. We've just got to find a way where we can come together and have some kind of agreement. I, I do a lot of investment out there. I try to make it, I think it's the nicest side of the county. It is. And I think together, we can keep it like that, but just throwing out this and that, we, we need to huddle up. I already told Bradford, we can use the, the venue out there to kind of get together, come with a reasonable request, present it to them, and let them do their job. So I'm not against it. I'm not for it, but I think we've got to come with a solution to try to move forward to it. And that's just what I got.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Appreciate that.
My name's Josh Parker, and I'm a local real estate professional, and I highly agree with what Mr. Verge had to say. I love Walton County. I grew up here, born and raised here. And one of the things about Walton County that has always, I guess, attracted people to it and attracted me to it is this rural southern charm that we have here. Obviously, as times progress, you know, guess what? Since this record shows that this county's growing, people are coming here. And obviously, there's nothing we can do to stop that. They want a piece of this rural southern charm that we have here in Walton County. I think the key is, like Mr. Verge said, is with this board and just moving forward, y'all are kind of setting precedence on what, you know, the footprint of this county's going to look like for the next 100 years. I'll say this, we definitely need houses. There is a housing shortage. We need houses. The sad thing, I think, about this particular development is the fact that, you know, the 2,200 square foot product, the 2,400 square foot product, those are great. Those are great products. But the product that he's building is really not the product that is for the citizens of Walton County. It's for the people who want to become citizens of Walton County. And so just kind of a side note, moving forward, you know, I think 1,000, I know they had a amendment to the agriculture with a 1,400 square foot minimum, and this is just kind of off-topic, but I don't think there's nothing wrong with a 1,000 or 1,200 square foot product. There's a actual need for that in this county. Because guess what? That 2,200 square foot, 2,400 square foot product is selling for 500, you know, 450, 500, maybe even 600 plus, depending on, on where it's at. Guess what? Your firefighters, your schoolteachers, your law enforcement, they're not buying that house. They're not buying that house. So I'm really excited. At the end of the day, I'm for property rights and, and, you know, hey, if the shoe was on the other foot, if I owned this property, yeah, you want to get the biggest bang for your buck. You want to make the biggest, you know, return on your investment. And he has a right as a property owner to do that. But at the same time, I think it's important to keep in mind that the decision that y'all make is kind of going to set precedent what's going to be moving forward. So I hope this is a great example of, you know, Walton County kind of partnering with the developer and coming up with a solution that works for everybody involved. So I hope that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Okay, who's next? We will go through the same process on, is it August 1st? So if you missed something, you'll have opportunity to bring it up at that meeting. And I give the applicant a chance to rebut if he wants to.
Do not hold your powder until next time.
You can hold your powder till next time. I think some of us would appreciate it because maybe, well, it's August 1st, it's going to be hotter then than it is now. Seeing that, then I'll close this public hearing. We will revisit the same issue. If y'all would, get with Commissioner Bradford and Bruce Verge and at least discuss some of this.
Mr. Chairman, would it be okay that I ask, may I get your contact information because I really don't want to have a meeting that you're not invited to along with a developer?
That's, that's fine.
We'll all get together and hopefully come up with a compromise that suits everyone.
Okay. All right, thank you all for coming. And we're going to move on with the rest of this long agenda. And we have before us the administrative consent agenda. Have y'all had a chance to look over it? Do you have any questions or...
We have a five-minute break while they clear now.
We will take a five-minute break while everybody's clearing now. Let's vote. Vote, yeah. We'll say they voted for it.
We present a PowerPoint. Do we need to, do I need to let the court know?
Yes, because they'll get it all set up for you beforehand.
Do you want me to submit it beforehand or...
Yes.
All right, Ms. Dixon, Mark Kane.
I'd like to.
I know you have the one coming up.
I got one coming up, so I'm going to try to get involved in this meeting too as well. So, yeah, present it to her.
Ms. Mander, right there.
She got a card?
She should, yes.
You will need to contact Patrice.
Mine's ready, man.
You know, very well.
You got my hair. Yeah, I ain't got that true. See, I used to farm. And I know about, there are no accidents here in North Georgia. Just to get past the water table here in Granite, you can find water in Granite. I've got a high production well, it's about 680 gallons a minute. But here in Walton County, they're rare, finding that type of water.
You ask it a long...
I think so.
Yes, you know, that's right.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir. First is going to be...
What's happening, fellas?
What's up, bro?
How you doing? Good to see you. Going back a little bit. Not much. I got to get back in there. I'm slacking bad.
You don't have that meeting at your place? I'm going to try to come with, mine's coming up next month. I'm President Valley, so I'll join.
So you got to...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good idea. I like what you're saying.
I'm a true salesman. Everyone's got...
That's what I do too. That's what I do. I took 42,000 for a house and that ain't real loud. That's what they're going to have to help us with. I'm a salesman. I'm a salesman. I'm a big bag of things. I'm a true... That's what I do. I just want to do something for you. I took 42,000 for a house and that ain't real loud. That's what they're going to have to help us with. I'm a salesman. I'm a big bag of things. I'm a great company. I think it's going to be a financial product today. All right, who we miss?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm excited. I'm fired up for you, Bob.
Oh, man, I'm excited.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
Scholarship of all scholarships. I had a guy play in there. He was second quarterback.
Okay, if everyone will settle back down, we'll get started back up here in a few minutes.
That's what I do. That's what that means.
We, we had a halfway motion to adjourn for five minutes and then we need a motion to come back into session, please.
We're missing one commissioner.
I just looked at him. Where did Lee go? He may be in the bathroom. All right, we'll hold on another minute. Well, we can come back into session and just note that Lee is absent. There he comes. All right, entertain a motion to come back into session.
So move.
Need a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye. All right, administrative consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous. Resolution 7.1. This is Walton County Consent Resolution. Oakone County bonded their part of the Hard Labor Creek, and we have to approve it. Entertain a motion to approve that.
Make a motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous. Contracts. This is agreement for inmate monitoring. I wish the sheriff was here. I'd like to ask him, are we stepping away from Joe Ray?
I think the answer is yes.
The answer is yes. All right, we need a motion to enter into this agreement for prisoner monitoring.
This is for the ankle monitoring problem. And I don't know whether the one that's in here is, we've negotiated this heavily, there's probably an updated version.
That is the update, I think.
Okay.
Make sure whatever you sign is the one that we...
I make a motion to approve the updated version.
We got a motion to approve the updated version?
That's right.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous. Parks and Rec. I'm sorry, I thought I heard someone talk. Parks and Rec has an agreement with Forte Payment Systems. It's for credit card processing, I guess, taking credit cards at Splash Park and other Need a motion to approve that.
The bulk of the building's gonna be used for election storage. They're gonna have two bays for the backup ambulances. And we're gonna modify their existing building to accommodate that classroom they were looking for and additional storage, or maybe referencing what you're talking about.
Yeah, like a bunker and a shower and stuff like that? And like potential living accommodations up there where they're at?
Yeah, that's already there.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Entertain a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have appointments. We have an appointment to the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission Council, Private Sector Representative. And who is Shane Short? Entertain a motion to?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
And that's to continue? He's already on the board, right? That's just continuation?
Reappointment.
That's just continuation?
This is a reappointment.
Reappointment, okay. So, it's not a point, a reappointment.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes. Appointment to Walton County Water and Sewer Authority, Mr. Chick. This will be replacing Mr. Chick and, isn't it?
Wendell.
Geiger, I'm sorry. Wendell Geiger. Wendell's had a six spell, and it's Mark Banks' appointment. And Mark, do you have somebody to recommend?
Let me make a little bit of statement on, Mr. Geiger, most of you knows him. He's been in Walton County for a long time. Highly respect him. His health has really declined to a point that he hadn't been able to make meetings, and they're having a hard time doing a quorum. The point that I'm gonna make is to Matt Arp, I looked around, I don't see him here tonight. But Matt has agreed to serve to a point that if Mr. Geiger's able to come back, he will. I don't want to take the last straw that he's got away from him. He's still got something to look forward to trying to come back to, and I don't have the heart to remove him. So, I'm on, Matt has agreed that if Mr. Geiger can come back, he'll step aside. So, at this time, I'm on, Matt Arp is the Water and Sewer Representative.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes. Okay, we have a vacancy in the Walton County Planning Commission. Lee, I believe that's your appointment.
Yes, sir. This would be a twofold motion. There, I would like to make a motion to appoint Keith Prather, who now sits on the Board of Appeals to the Walton County Planning Commission, and William Malcolm to fill Keith Prather's spot on the Board of Appeals.
Malcolm, am I? Okay. We have, Keith needs to officially resign from the Board of Appeals.
Yeah, he broke with it. I can get him to send in an email.
Yeah, he needs to send something to Sharona.
I can have him do that tonight.
Okay. We have a motion to let Keith Prather to leave the Board of Appeals and be on the Walton County Planning Commission, and Mr. William Malcolm to be appointed to the Board of Appeals. I need a second. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have appointments. We have an appointment to the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission Council, Private Sector Representative. And who is Shane Short? Entertain a motion to?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
And that's to continue? He's already on the board, right? That's just continuation?
Reappointment.
That's just continuation?
This is a reappointment.
Reappointment, okay. So, it's not a point, a reappointment.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes. Appointment to Walton County Water and Sewer Authority, Mr. Chick. This will be replacing Mr. Chick and, isn't it?
Wendell.
Geiger, I'm sorry. Wendell Geiger. Wendell's had a six spell, and it's Mark Banks' appointment. And Mark, do you have somebody to recommend?
Let me make a little bit of statement on, Mr. Geiger, most of you knows him. He's been in Walton County for a long time. Highly respect him. His health has really declined to a point that he hadn't been able to make meetings, and they're having a hard time doing a quorum. The point that I'm gonna make is to Matt Arp, I looked around, I don't see him here tonight. But Matt has agreed to serve to a point that if Mr. Geiger's able to come back, he will. I don't want to take the last straw that he's got away from him. He's still got something to look forward to trying to come back to, and I don't have the heart to remove him. So, I'm on, Matt has agreed that if Mr. Geiger can come back, he'll step aside. So, at this time, I'm on, Matt Arp is the Water and Sewer Representative.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes. Okay, we have a vacancy in the Walton County Planning Commission. Lee, I believe that's your appointment.
Yes, sir. This would be a twofold motion. There, I would like to make a motion to appoint Keith Prather, who now sits on the Board of Appeals to the Walton County Planning Commission, and William Malcolm to fill Keith Prather's spot on the Board of Appeals.
Malcolm, am I? Okay. We have, Keith needs to officially resign from the Board of Appeals.
Yeah, he broke with it. I can get him to send in an email.
Yeah, he needs to send something to Sharona.
I can have him do that tonight.
Okay. We have a motion to let Keith Prather to leave the Board of Appeals and be on the Walton County Planning Commission, and Mr. William Malcolm to be appointed to the Board of Appeals. I need a second. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Have under discussion County Manager's Report, and we have no one signed up for public comments. And after the County Manager's Report, we will need to go into executive session. We have some real estate matters that need addressing.
I'll try to get through this as quickly as I can, but I also want to make sure you are aware of some of these points. Participation in Parks and Rec in the Athletics Division has, we're expecting that to reach 7,000 this year, and that's gonna be 500 participants over last year's numbers. And part of the reason that we need to update our credit card processing center as we increase those numbers. And water, we currently have 17,414 customers. We're averaging about 5.5 million gallons a day, which is down, but that's mostly due to the earlier cooler weather and all the rain that we're continually getting, knock on wood, that we continue to get that.
Nobody's had to turn on a sprinkler, not these past few weeks.
In recycling, your recycling mattress program continues to just exceed expectations with over 800 mattresses collected to date since your approval of that. And in June, nearly 2,600 vehicles crossed over the scales at the recycling center, just doing business there and seeking county services. In HR, just wanted to tout that the health clinic is now open. It's open for all participants who have health insurance with the county and their dependents. We've worked out a timeframe in the first few hours of the morning to accommodate walk-in. The rest of its appointment, we have a number you can text even to set up an appointment or for aftercare, where they will set up a web call if somebody's in need of emergency assistance at night. And that's available without a co-pay for all participants and their dependents. Right now, the numbers are increasing. We had four or five appointments the very first day after the ribbon cutting, and we've continued to grow in those numbers. And we're gonna be also working with HR staff to increase that as we go. We're also keeping up with, staff and I are having those replanning meetings continue so we can work out any issues or kinks. So, if anybody experiences anything there, if they'll make us aware of it, we can help them work through that. Traffic operations responded to over 185 work orders this past month. Finance is closing out, has closed out FY '23, opened up FY '24. Their new software program allows their data storage to be in the cloud, which makes it a different level of security. And future announcement for dates of the militerate hearings are July 24th at 11 o'clock and 6 o'clock in this room, and August 1st at 5 o'clock before your next County Commission meeting. And those of you who'd like to attend are welcome to come for that. EMA, monthly joint meetings with all the fire chiefs continue, and a new meeting that's been set up will be with all the police and sheriff's office throughout the county, continuing to coordinate emergency services. They also just completed a three-day active shooter drill with the SO, Fire, EMS, and 911 as we prepare for the upcoming school year to provide safety to all the students in Walton County. Animal control, over the last month, they collected 87 dogs. 57 of those were returned to owners, transferred to rescues, and were adopted. Our numbers continue to be rather large in the cats that are collected. Most of those are feral cats throughout the county that they're dealing with. With that, the final thing I just wanted to update you on is that we're continuing to work through value engineering on the Walnut Grove Park in hopes of getting that well within budget so that we can bring back a recommendation to you for that.
Okay, any questions for the County Manager? All right, thank you, John. As said, there's no one signed up for public comments. We have, anybody has any announcements to make? If not, entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So, move.
Yeah, a motion and a second.
For what?
All those in favor, say aye.
For what business, Mr.?
Real estate.
Real estate. Thank you.
I'm gonna apologize. Been here so long, my legs don't wanna work.[1383.12] Been here so long, my legs don't wanna work.
Look, she's the one that's on the...
You can have it, you can have it after I'm through with it.
I hope, I hope so long.
Okay. Need a motion to come back into regular session?
No move.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the chairman's fixing to make three motions. First one is I make a motion to purchase the underlying fee simple interest of the 55.49 acres parcel owned by East Village Reserve, LLC, between Highway 78 and Baker Street for $92,441, which is $1,684.11 per acre. And would like a second.
Second.
Got one. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. My second motion, I make a motion to condemn the Atlantic Coast Conservancy's interest in the 55.49 acres parcel owned by East Village Reserve, LLC, for an access road from Highway 78 to the current and future government building complex based upon an appraised value of $110,000, which is approximately $2,000 an acre.
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous. I make a motion to condemn the Atlantic Coast Conservancy's interest in the remaining 116.806 acres owned by Jack's Creek. Correction. Formerly owned. Let me write it down for you. Formerly owned by Jack's Creek Reserve, LLC, which is adjacent to the New Public Safety Complex for road right-of-way and future government buildings and proposes and purposes based upon an appraised value of $221,984, which is approximately $1,900 per acre.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous. Is any other business before the board? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
I second that one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned. Somebody's talking.